This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everyone. The time is now 7:30, and this is the April 15, 2021 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please use your devices at this time so as not to just-
I can't hear anyone. Can you guys hear me?
There will be several-
Hi, you guys.
We will advise-
It's Liz.
...times. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I know Councilwoman Holman is trying to get on, so she may miss the initial roll call, but she's, well-
No, I'm on, sorry, I'm on audio. I just, I can't get, I can't get into the meeting on the computer. Anyway, I'm here.
Okay, great. Well, so then you can continue to try that, but you're here, so, and, and you can participate via teleconference or via phone, so that's fine. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Thank you. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso? Absent. Councilman Strauss?
Here.
And Councilwoman Wozinski? She's-
Yeah, so Amy, we can't hear you, but, but she's here. She's motioned that she's here.
Yes.
So, and she'll, we'll figure that part out, but she's here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
I'm here too. Okay. Yeah, so Amy, we, we can't, we see you talking, it's just not coming through. Okay, we'll continue. Public comment. This is the first three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit to address the governing body. So this is the first of three times for the, when the public can speak. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard at this time? Not seeing anyone.
My name is Edward Grimes.
Oh, okay. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm with SativaCross.org. We're a 501(c)(3) here in New Jersey, advocating for disabled rights and cannabis patients' rights. I live in East Hanover, on Hanover Road. I have a question. The, the cannabis ordinance that you're proposing, or that you're passing, there's an exemption for, for medical dispensaries? Is that, is that correct?
There's nothing on the agenda.
Yeah, there's nothing on the agenda. There's nothing on the agenda tonight.
Okay. It's something you're considering, though. I think you have an ordinance already that, that has a exemption for medical, and I hope that you continue that exemption. I advocate for people that are sick and dying and suffering, people in wheelchairs that have no access. We really need your help as patients. We're getting hit from all sides. We're getting taxed. We get a 2% tax on our medicine, which is a very slippery slope. If we start taxing insulin and stuff like that, it's, it's a very dangerous precedent to set. Imagine if they tax something that you needed, that saved your life, and already our insurance doesn't cover our cannabis. So we're getting, we're getting taxed, we're getting overpriced medicine. We just had a recall where our medicine was moldy, actually mold, it's selling us overpriced moldy cannabis. And these are sick people with immune issues, and, and like, we need your help. We really need your help here. I'm not here advocating for recreational. I'm advocating for people that are sick and dying, people that need to be put, put first in line. Right now with recreational, people in wheelchairs are going to the back of the line, and when they get to the front of that line, the strains that they need are sold out, the amounts that they need are sold out, and they're priced out of it. In, in your town, you have sick people that are in wheelchairs. Consider being in a wheelchair for a day and having to get a ride to a dispensary because it's not in your town. You have to go somewhere else. Well, first of all, you have to incur the cost of an Uber, and most Ubers don't take wheelchairs, especially an electric wheelchair. That's a whole nother process. So you're, you're pricing an extra, an extra cost into that. A lot of people say, oh, you get delivery service. Well, why, why, why aren't wheelchair-bound people allowed to browse? Why can't wheelchair-bound people leave their home and be like everybody else, like able-bodied people, and shop like everybody else? And plus, there's another cost to delivery. That's another cost we have to incur, which we can't afford. We're on disability. Two-thirds of all bankruptcies are caused by medical debt. A lot of my friends are broke. They don't have money, and they're sick, and they're dying. And so I'm just asking that you can, you, you consider where you would put a medical dispensary in town, and if you would implement the 2% tax, I think these are discussions that, that need to be had, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And, and we, we appreciate your input. I will indicate to you, Public Safety Committee has been discussing this, the Land Use Committee's been discussing this. We're not taking any action today. Before we take action, it'll be on, on the agenda, and, and we will, we'll discuss it as a council, and I appreciate your input. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard at this time? Not seeing anyone. Administration, we move to administration part of the work session with the agenda review. A fairly light agenda. We have three ordinances listed for second reading and public hearing. The first two, ordinance 21-04 and 21-05, these two ordinances set the 2021 salary ranges for the UBSIA white-collar unit and non-union employees respectively. The third ordinance for second reading is 21-06. This ordinance establishes eligibility requirements and the promotional process of officers to the ranks of chief, captain, lieutenant, and sergeant of the Allendale Police Department, and this is for second reading. We discussed it two weeks ago when we introduced it. There are also seven resolutions on the consent agenda for approval. The first, three award contracts for various services and projects. The first one is 21-119 to award a contract to Suburban Disposal, Inc. We recently went out to bid for garbage and recycling services. Suburban Disposal was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and will be continuing to provide us with the same outstanding services for the next three years, that they have for many years. And we've looked at some other options. Although we looked at other options, the collections in the schedule will all remain the same. Next on the consent agenda is 21-120, approved contract 21-00024, the 2020 Municipal Parks Improvement Program, Crestwood Park. The borough was awarded a $75,000 matching grant through the Bergen County Open Space Program to improve the cross-country circuit trails in Crestwood. This resolution authorizes us to enter into a contract with Bergen County. And Amy, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but if you do, I want to give you the opportunity. We can't hear her. Can't hear you, Amy. Okay. But I, I know Amy has spoken about this in, in the past, and if, if we can figure that part out during her report, she can speak to it. Next is 21-121 and 21-122. We have reached an agreement with Northwest Bergen Regional Health Commission to continue to provide registrar of vital statistics services to the borough for 2021. Thank you to Ron for negotiating the, the reduced rate. Next is 21-123. We had an opening for our alternate public defender, and we are happy to appoint and welcome Louis De Angelis as our new alternate public defender. He comes highly recommended and has experience in that capacity in Demerist, Dumont, Inglewood, Hallworth, and Norwood Municipal Courts. Thank you to Matthew Miller for all of his years of service to Allendale, and we wish him the best in his new role as a superior court judge. So congratulations to him. 21-124, authorize emergency appropriations for our 2021 temporary budget. We'll be authorizing some additional funds into the temporary budget, which are necessary for continuous operation of the borough until our 2021 budget is adopted. Next is 21-125 is the bill list. I've gone over it. Matt?
Yes, I did.
Good. And Amy, I'm sure you've gone over as well. Okay. So that, that's the end, that's the end of the review of the consent agenda. We're going to go to the council reports. I'm going to start with my mayor's report, and then we'll go through the different council members' reports. First and foremost, we lost a pillar in our, in our community on Friday. Vincenzo Vinnie Pataro, president of the Allendale Ambulance Corps, passed away unexpectedly last Friday, April 9. Vinnie is also the husband, was also the husband to Allendale Ambulance Corps Chief Darrell Demore Pataro. On behalf of the entire borough, we send our deepest and sincerest condolences to Darrell and the entire Pataro family on this great loss. Both Vinnie and Darrell's service to Allendale has been tremendous, and words alone cannot express our appreciation for their dedication to our, to our community. Councilman O'Connell, I met with Vinnie a couple months ago, and he was talking about, you know, all the things that he did. He wasn't bragging, but just the, the long list. And for Darrell, I know at the OEM meetings, she's been on over 200 calls, you know, during COVID. So what, they're, they're selfless acts, and they've done it for many years. I was reading the outpouring of tributes for Vinnie. Great guy, wonderful, the, the best were used over and over to finely describe him. He was devoted to his family, his country, Allendale. And today, our community came together to give him a fitting last call per session. Thank you, Vinnie. May you rest in peace. I would also like to send condolences to the entire ambulance corps. I know you're a family, and you're grieving at this time, and you're also in our thoughts and prayers, and we thank you all for your service as well. During the regular session, we'll be having a moment of silence after the salute to the flag in Vinnie's memory, so if you will join me in that. Spring cleaning, where it's the spring, and there's some things that go along with the spring. So April 25, the Bergen County Utilities Authority will be having the tire and electronics recycling event in, at Camp Coa in Mala. Details can be found on their website, BCUA.org. The Allendale Women's Club is having their townwide garage sale on May 15. Details can be found on their website, AllendaleWomen'sClub.org. Same day, on May 15, the BCUA will be having Household House Collection of- UA.org for all of the details. On May 22, we'll be having our annual free paper shredding day, which is sponsored by the BCUA. This year will be taking place at Crestwood Park from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and details of this event can be found on our website, AllendaleNJ.gov. COVID-19, where we are seeing decreases in the number of cases in Allendale, but Bergen County still remains in that high or extremely high category. And although more people get vaccinated, this is our decreasing, and in Allendale, our numbers are decreasing. We need to continue to do our part and take the necessary precautions to stay healthy. We continue to meet weekly to monitor the situation, and as I've mentioned at prior meetings, in conjunction with our Board of Health and public and private partnerships, the borough can now help facilitate the scheduling of COVID-19 vaccines for our at-risk residents. If you're over, if you're 65 years of age or older and have not been able to schedule a COVID-19 vaccination, please contact the Board of Health at HealthDepartment@AllendaleNJ.gov. That information is also on our website, and it's also in our April newsletter that went out through Constant Contact. Effective April 19, all New Jerseians ages 16 years and up will be able to receive the vaccine, and that information can be found on the COVID-19 nj.gov. So that is the end of my report, and so we'll go, we'll now do our committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to echo your sentiments on Vincent Pataro. We send their condolences to their family. OEM, you did say their cases were down, and they are, and we're going to start our OEM meetings for every two weeks now. Calls into the borough, we've had up-to-date 3,800 calls, 911 calls, 428, fire calls, 25, EMS calls, 105. Training, spring qualifications were done last week. Everyone passed. One officer completed AG-directed resiliency course, and one officer completed a rifle instructor course. One of our dispatchers is leaving us, a full-time dispatcher. The chief said he's going to be moving a part-time dispatcher up to full-time, and I'm sure he's going to be looking for a part-time dispatcher in the future. The Junior Police Academy, it's going to be starting July 12 to the 16th. Signups were April 1. They opened up at 9 o'clock, and they were closed within an hour. They had 60 kids sign up and 20-plus kids on a waiting list, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilman. I know Councilman Sasso is not here, so Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report?
Sure. First of all, I mean, I think we're all going to say that Vinnie was a tremendous person and such an asset to everyone, and the work that he and Darrell together have done, it's, it's, it's hard to put it into words. So as anybody else, my heart breaks, and just thank you to Darrell and to his whole family for sharing him with us for so much. So, thank you. As far as water, week was a big week. We are, the request for bids, the RFB has officially launched into the market as of Wednesday, the 9th. So the appropriate advertising has begun, as well as the information just on how to acquire the bids is found on our website. So thank you to Michelle for working with our team to make all of that happen. And while the RFB is out until May, Friday, May 21st, we are still working and moving forward on the, on the steps to the New Street PFAS Treatment Facility, because I think that certainly is important, that we keep everything going forward, seeing what happens. So that's something that is ongoing, working with our team. Also, we do need to hold off on any sort of activity as far as shared services with other towns and municipalities, so that will be on hold while we wait for the RFBs. But on May 22, we'll hopefully start, you know, just exploring that, just seeing what comes forward with these potential bids. I also attended a seminar on 1-4 dioxane and PFAS treatment, and felt good that our team is up to speed and that the work we've done thus far is right on target. And I guess the other thing I want to say is, you know, on the second to Amy on the parks, wrecks, and facilities, and Amy does so much work and is such a good leader, and I appreciate, you know, being a part of the team and the coordination that she does with everybody, you know, both on the council, working for the borough, as well as outside people is really tremendous. So Amy, I have to give a shout out because it's, it's, it's a lot, and it's so great, and Ron and his whole team are excellent to work with, with you, so I just want to say thanks.
Great.
And thank you all for putting me on the, the committee with her. It's really, it's, it's fun. It's wonderful, and it's great for Allendale.
Right, and-
That's what I say. We're in charge of fun.
You both do good work. So, speaking of, Amy, Councilwoman Wozinski, your report.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what happened to my audio today. Having some problems. So sure, I will start with 2:20, 2:30. Lots, lots going on, lots of meetings. We have reached a lot of milestones this week. The remediation is complete. We actually filed a claim with our insurance company, and we have that check in hand. We actually also filed a grant from the New Jersey DEP to help pay for the remediation. We did get approved for that, so we're working through all that. We also put in a claim with PK. They have acknowledged our claim, so now we're going through the discovery piece of that. We had a very, very big milestone on Tuesday with the county. They approved the subdivision. So the next big step is to close on the warehouse. We still have a lot of documents to go through. Our next council meeting, there'll be a lot of important documents on there that we need to go through, are the redevelopment agreement, the purchase and sale. We'll also be working on the financial agreement, the pilot for the residential. So fingers crossed that all goes smoothly, and we should be closing by the end of this month, and that is a big, big, big win for Allendale, and we'll finally be able to have a little celebration. And if all goes as planned, the demo for the front, the residential, will be the next part, piece to close, and then we will be demo, demoing that front building by the fall. Crestwood Lake, as Liz mentioned, we are gearing up. Richie and the DPW are really working hard at the lake. It looks fabulous. There is tons of sand that was delivered today, so if anybody has little ones, that is the most fun, to have them play on those big piles of sand before, before they get spread. And hopefully, Ron's not listening to this because he's going to say, what are you doing? What are you doing, Amy? But it is fun if you have little ones. We've been working close with the lake director. We are going through all of the precautions that we did last year, following the executive orders. Most importantly, though, we're following common sense guidelines, following the science. We have plenty of space there, so we're going to make sure that everybody is safe, they're spread out, and they'll be able to enjoy some fun in the sun again. Tom Biscardi just went to a pool manager's meeting, so we did kind of get the okay for slides and diving boards. We were super lucky last year that we did get to open. There was many, many facilities that did not even open, so everybody's really, you know, dying to open all of the other pools and lakes in the area, so they're really kind of working through, trying to figure out how best to open this state for all the residents of New Jersey. So we will actually be opening up our Crestwood Lake registration on May 3. We are going to have a slight increase in our rates, unfortunately. It's really, our minimum wage is, is a, is a killer. It's going up and up, and our expenses are going up, and it is a slight increase. We were supposed to increase last year, but we didn't want to. It's still very affordable. It's still very affordable for Allendale residents, especially in comparison to a lot of the other pools in the area. So our managers are gearing up. There's going to be an opportunity to buy some Crestwood swag this year, some more beach towels and some other fun things, so keep your eye out for that. If you've been at the park, you will see that the playground is coming along nicely. That is geared to be done by Memorial Day. There was actually a little picture of it in our monthly newsletter, if you wanted to get a peek, but it is kid-approved, so I think it's going to be a great addition to our park. The band shell, we just, we just kind of finished the, the bottom layer of it, so it extends a little bit more, and the next phase of that is to kind of fix up the surround. The fence will be getting replaced around the playground, so that whole area is going to get a really nice upgrade, all with Bergen County Open Space Grants. The fields are, are starting to get filled with ballplayers. They've been groomed in this past two weeks, so they look great. As far as the other grant that we were talking about, that's also a Bergen County Open Space Grant, it's for the, there's massive amounts of woods all surrounding Crestwood Lake, and there's actually paths through there. A lot of the paths, though, are not passable because we have a lot of felled trees. There's also some very, very deep swales. So we're just looking to kind of clean that up to make that kind of like a nice walking path all around Field 5, stick up around by Highlands, and around by West Maplefield. So it'll be a nice, nice nature walk when it's done. Our 9/11, our 9/11, our ceremony this year, unfortunately, it is the 20-year anniversary, believe it or not, and there is going to be an opportunity this year for the, for the 20-year memorance to buy pavers again. So we started this program when we were initially developing the memorial. So we, we had the beautiful eagle, and then we retained the piece of steel. So there's an opportunity. I've been approached by a lot of residents who really want to be part of this, this memory, and being the 20-year this year, we thought it would be a really good opportunity to let some of the newer residents, or any residents who didn't get a chance, come and have the opportunity to purchase paver. So there's an opportunity for two different pavers, as well as one bench. There's actually one bench left, so there's information on that in the newsletter this month as well. We're already trying to plan for the 9/11 memorial service this year. We're looking for a speaker, and like I said, we've been working on to try to do something really special. And then finally, of course, I really share the sentiment of my fellow council people. Allendale's really heartbroken to lose one of our AVAC family members. Vinnie Pataro has been worked in service to Allendale for many, many years as our president, and Darrell Demore as captain, his wife, of our ambulance corps for, for many, many years as well. So our heartfelt condolences to them and to the rest of the AVAC family, and I think that's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much for your comprehensive report. Councilman O'Toole?
Absolutely. Thank you. I too would like to extend my condolences to Darrell, to the Pataro family, and the entire ambulance corps on Vinnie's loss. The committee has met a number of times on a number of topics since our last council meeting. We've discussed assessments, appeals, grant that the library is pursuing, and of course, the budget. We've met with the Finance Advisory Committee. We yielded some ideas on how we could possibly bring our tax increase down somewhat. We had a follow-up meeting with the entire team, including Paul Lurch, to discuss utilizing those suggestions, and we're still doing all the due diligence on that. We are still awaiting guidance on how we can use the funds from the American Rescue Plan, and we hope that we can at least apply a portion of it to our budget, though there are no guarantees on that. So we're still working on it. That's all I've got for this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilman-
Sorry. Sorry, it's Liz. Can I just add one thing to my report?
Yeah, let me do Councilman Strauss, and then we'll circle back to you.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Yeah, I also would like to start with my condolences to Darrell, the Pataro family, and as the other council members and you already had said, to the entire Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps family. This is a family of dedicated volunteers, and to lose, you know, first Scott and now Vinnie, it, my heart goes out to them, and I thank them for all their service. You mentioned already that we've renewed our, our disposal contract with Suburban Disposal, and even though nothing has changed, it didn't change the fact that the team, Ron and his team, spent a lot of time reviewing the various options to make sure that we're delivering the best service to the residents at the most competitive price, and it turns out we are. So though there's no change, a lot of time was spent on that, and I want to thank the team. You know, the, the DPW team, be it the guys in the field or the, the office staff that supports them, have been working diligently, as Amy and, and you already had said, getting Crestwood, the fields, Allendale in general, looking, looking nice, and so I want to thank everybody. I know that Ron has been busy getting Northwest Bergen County Utilities Authority to, you know, clean out our sewer mains. You know, they have a vacuum at their disposal, and Ron, as he always has done, has teamed up with surrounding entities and Northwest Bergen County Utilities Authority. They're the ones who own the sewers, and they're responsible for maintaining it with the towns, and Ron's been really diligent about that, and, and I appreciate it. So we may be seeing the, that big vacuum jet in town, and also potentially at Crestwood, where Ron has asked them to vacuum out the pit, as, on the backside of the boards. The, Ron's also working, Ron's been a busy boy. Ron's also working with Bergen County to make sure that the catch basins, the stormwater catch basins on the county roads are taken care of in a timely manner. You know, Bergen County's a big county, and we're just one small town, and, you know, Ron does a good job of making sure that, that, you know, we're taken care of. So thank you again, Ron.
And Jim, I'm sorry, I'm, because it's 8 o'clock, I need to close the work session, and I'm, I can, can come back to you during the, the regular session. And I'm, I can come back to you during the, the regular session, but it's eight o'clock, okay? So because it requires, this is what these sort of meetings run, I'm going to request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved, Strouch.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Everyone stay put. Don't go anywhere. The time is eight o'clock and this is April 15, 2021, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. This time I ask that you please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year. And copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great. We're going to, please all rise to salute the flag. And as I mentioned before, if you're just joining us, please remain standing for a moment of silence for Vincenzo Vinnie Vitaro, President of the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps, who tragically passed away this past Friday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Ron Kistner, who can speak more eloquently than I can on this.
Mark, it went up, but fortunately our ton, our fee was only $82.50 a ton. We hit it just right because municipalities around us are anywhere from $90 to $92 for the tipping fees. There has been an increase of just the, the service itself, but we really were very fortunate on the tipping fees to get such a low number. It was 76.50, so we went up $6, but other people have seen double, even more than double that. So numbers did go up, but we, we got a very good number from Resili and Suburban Disposal.
Are we, are we receiving money for any of the recyclables any longer?
That, that's right. At this current time, no one's, there's, there's no, the days of getting a check back for recyclables is not happening right now.
Not even for cord?
Not even cardboard right now.
We are still encouraging recycling, Mark, so we're still going to be picking it up. At the same time, the schedule is going to be the same. So we're still encouraging residents to recycle the same way that they have because we're really hoping that the recycle market will, will come back. I mean, we spent so many years getting Allendale into a great space with recycling and people doing a great job recycling. I think we're up to 30% at one point. So we are still encouraging it. Unfortunately, the revenue is not coming in like we'd like to see, but we are hopeful that America, you know, will start stepping up with the new facilities and stuff since China obviously does not take our recyclers anymore and that we'll be able to reap some revenue in the, in the next couple of years.
And composting is really a great way to reduce the trash, just using the composting units. And Bergen County Utility Authority sells the green machine that you can pick up. It's, they sell it at cost, it's like $60, and it's definitely a great way to reduce the amount of garbage that goes out.
Liz loves her. She uses it all the time.
I soil and it looks so good and there's worms.
And very briefly, Mayor, another question about the budget. You had mentioned in one of the previous meetings about the changeover to voice over IP. And I'm glad to hear about that. I've done that for my customers as well. I was wondering how much the costs have gone down for that. I saw it was only $5,000 that was allotted for telephones. Have we saved a significant amount of money?
Would you like me to answer that, Mayor?
Sure. Melissa, go ahead.
So it's going to take some time to get that all put into place. So for at least half of the year, we're going to be paying the old system, if you will. And then there are some one-time costs that we will incur to change over to this for the whole borough as well. So that's why it's not that much of a, we won't see that much of a savings this year. We'll see some, but then going forward, it will be a lot.
And then we'll be able to transfer the system over to the new building seamlessly. So that's part of the reason too. It's an upgrade.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much and thank you, Melissa. Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard on agenda items?
Just make a comment?
Okay, sure.
Hi, my name is Jeff King. I live in Eaton Town. And I just wanted to say that I am happy with the investment in the municipal open space, the park program. That's excellent. I love the parks in Allendale. They're first class and I really appreciate it. Thank you for taking care.
Thank you very much and thank you for your comment. We appreciate that. Anyone else?
And Mark, too.
Just tell us your address for the record. Eaton Town, you said, right?
Sure, I'm at 24 Elizabeth Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mark Savastano, for, for the record, just give us your address.
Yes, 22 Vreeland Place.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Ordinances for second reading and public hearing. As mentioned in the work session, we have three ordinances for second reading and public hearing tonight, which we will take care of individually. We'll start with ordinance 21-04, which I mentioned, discussed in the work session. Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-04.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on March 25, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. It's ordinance 21-04, an ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale Officers and Employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2021 UPSU White Collar Unit.
Great, thank you. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 21-04. Not seeing anyone, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on second and final reading. Or it is 21-04, notice of same shall be published according to law. Request such a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy.
I'm sorry, was that motion O'Toole?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy on the second. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yep.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is ordinance 21-05. Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-05.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on March 25, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 21-05, an ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale Officers and Employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2021, non-union.
Thank you. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 21-05. Not seeing anyone, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on second and final reading, ordinance 21-05.
So moved.
So moved, O'Connell.
O'Connell first, second?
I think Matt was second.
And notice of same to be published according to law. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yep.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And the third ordinance for second and final reading is 21-06. Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-06.
The following ordinance published herewith was first read by title only on March 25, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 21-06, an ordinance amending and supplementing Article 2, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Thank you. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 21-06. Not seeing any, I will request the council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance 21-06 with notice of same to be published according to law.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Councilman Strouch. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yep.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda that we reviewed during the work session. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, O'Toole.
Thank you, Councilman O'Toole. Second?
Holman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holman. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yep.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everyone. Any unfinished business? Any new business? No, so we'll wrap up the committee reports. Councilman Strouch, if you have anything left, and then Councilwoman Holman, I think she had one more comment to add.
Okay, do you want me to finish up here, Ari?
Yes, please.
Okay, no problem. So when I left off for, you know, I was thanking the DPW team. The, one of the things I wanted to mention was that the new street sweeper has been working well and the entire town has been swept of all the winter debris and residue that was lingering. And as part of our spring cleanup, the borough properties have all been mulched and, and, you know, raked and spruced up. The compost area opened last weekend, which is a big deal for people who use that. And on behalf of the DPW guys and the entire town staff, we appreciate the residents who are cooperative and understand that we're working under difficult conditions. So thank you from the DPW department to the Allendale residents for working with us as we, as we stumble through this pandemic. On other news in the volunteer world, I'm pleased to report that the Green Team has two new members, Pat Finn and Sean Kelly. So we have now filled six of the eight seats on the Green Team. And Mark Savastano is doing a great job leading the team. And he'll be giving a brief update at the end of the meeting during the public session. And last but not least, the Goose Patrol is holding their testing for the six families that are, have new dogs. And we'll be doing that next Saturday, April 24th. So it's exciting for those of us with dogs or, wow, I don't have dogs anymore. But for those with dogs, it's a big deal and we do appreciate their efforts because it does keep Allendale and the fields goose poop free, which is nice. So I'm going to end my report with that. Thank you, Ari.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time and effort in your report. Councilwoman Holman, you had something you wanted to add to your report?
Yes, I, I, just because I know sometimes it's hard to get out there, but we are going to do another public water meeting. Just kind of an update on Tuesday, May the 4th. There were no other activities listed on our calendar, so I realized that we only have this council meeting and then the one on the 29th. So I'm like, I want to make sure I get it out there so we get people talking about water.
Great, thank you and thank you for all of your work. I would truly, truly appreciate it. Yeoman's task.
Thanks.
Staff reports, Ray?
I think as you could tell from reports of Councilwoman Wilsinski on the 220, 230 Committee and the report of Councilwoman Holman on the Water Committee. Since our last meeting, both committees have been very, very active. They're, they're both to be commended for the amount of work that's being done and necessarily a lot of documents, a lot of review and a lot of coordination with, with many people, council members and otherwise. So it's, it's been a very busy couple of weeks on both of those levels. Some of the ordinances, I think, Mary, you mentioned it in your report and the gentleman who spoke during the public commentary. Obviously, the new legislation on marijuana is a hot button issue throughout all municipalities. And I know that both the Public Safety Committee and also the Land Use Committee here, well before the comments tonight, have been meeting regularly to talk about it. We do know that the governor ceded his cannabis commission this past week and they had their first meeting on Monday. So we're all awaiting the regulations which will stem from that committee, which will be some guidance to Allendale and all other municipalities on how to address that issue going forward. And obviously the subtle piece between medical marijuana, which the governing body has previously provided for in its ordinance, and recreational marijuana will be a very interesting issue to see how it develops when the commission issues its report. In addition, we've worked with Mr. Kistner on some land use issues and some personnel matters and ordinances resolutions on tonight's agenda.
Right, thank you. No, thank you very much for that and for all of your work. I know you've been very busy and we appreciate the guidance. Michelle?
Thank you. We're just very busy in the clerk's office. We are selling compost permits. Councilman Strouch mentioned that it opened this past weekend. We actually went on to the facility and We actually went on to the facility and sold quite a few, and so we encourage residents to reach out to us and buy those, and then we're just very busy with Oprah's, as Mr. Wiss and TJ are painfully aware.
Some were interesting than others.
Yes.
I know this is off topic, and it's not, but I, to the public, I don't say this to you, I say this to the public. Michelle, Tatiana, John, everyone at Borough Hall is working tirelessly for all the residents. If you, if you as a resident and you're frustrated, we understand frustration seems to be, you know, a lot of people are, don't take it out on our borough employees, don't take it out on, on the people that are answering the phone. They, I don't want to tell you how late at night Michelle is here, in the weekends she's here, trying to make sure that the borough runs seamlessly for us. So I just ask to everyone, their employees, they're, they're going beyond the call of duty on a daily basis, and they have since, since, since they started and certainly through COVID. So I just want to take that opportunity to thank you. I know you don't want the thanks, and you don't want the attention, but you, Tatiana and John and everyone else, and let's everyone for all of their work. Ron?
Not to belabor point, I usually don't have a report, but I think it's important tonight, maybe just because some things going on in my personal life. I want to thank everybody. Mr. Wiss is our borough attorney. He does more than residents, I think maybe people realize, he, he cares about this community. He goes out of his way, he gives us, he gives me input, expertise on stuff that I don't even bring to his attention. The clerk's office, some people might know, people need to know whatever, I'm shorthanded in the DPW right now, my wonderful assistant's out right now, has been, the finance office, Gina, Alyssa, and Carol especially, you know, with a smile, helped me out more than they need to. The clerk's office, you know, Michelle, myself, Tatiana and John, we all worked together in the past, they're more than coworkers, they're my friends. They look out for me, which I need a lot of looking out for sometimes. Everybody here is just very special. The mayor and council, I know I can be grumpy sometimes and even get on you guys' nerves. I consider you guys friends, I, I live in Hasbro Heights, but I consider Allendale a sick at home. Not to get emotional, but just need to be said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree, I joined.
Yeah. Thanks, that was really sweet. We know you're going through a lot.
Right, join in the sentiment. Alyssa, would you like to, would you like to give your report? Or do you have a report, anything you'd like to add?
No, no.
Open the floor, so we're nearing the end of the meeting, open the floor to the public on any matter. Anyone who wishes to be heard at this time?
Hello, can you hear me?
I, I can hear someone, I'm not sure who it is.
Okay, all right, because before I had to leave the meeting and come back, you couldn't hear me. This is Natalie Cottone-Sadi, I live at 16 Heights Road. I have a question. It's, it has nothing to do with any of the agenda items. It's about voting machines in our town and what, who the manufacturer is of those voting machines, if you happen to know.
I think that would be, this is Michelle Ryan, the acting municipal clerk, and I think that's a question that would best be answered by the Bergen County Superintendent of Elections. If you'd like to call me or send me an email tomorrow, my contact information is on the website, I can reach out to them on your behalf and then pass along that information to you. The Borough of Allendale does not have voting machines, they're supplied by the county of Bergen.
Right, okay, that's, that's what I thought, I was just curious what, okay, what is your name?
Again, Michelle. L Ryan. And my email address is michelleryan@allendalenjdocup.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, thank you for your question. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone.
May I please speak?
I think that's Jeffrey King.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff King, 24 Elizabeth Parkway, Eaton Town. I just, well, first, let me give my condolences to Darryl and the Bataro family and the volunteer ambulance corps, sorry for your losses. I, I'm from Eaton Town, but I have family in Waldwick, and every time we come up, we always stop at the celery farm, and such a great place, seeing the birds. We always bring a bag and pick up litter, there's nothing there really, but we make sure of that. And I just was thinking about what Mr. Grimes said during the workshop, and I think it is important to have medical cannabis access for people who are sick and suffering and vulnerable. I know, I think you, you understand that medical is important, I think I'm hearing that. I appreciate that understanding. The AARP and the American Legion also support medical cannabis, so a lot of people have loved ones that would be affected, so thank you for your compassion on that. And I was just thinking about how, you know, I don't want to see any cannabis litter in the celery farm or anywhere in town, in my town, your town, anywhere, and I think like, how do we keep the litter down? We have responsible operators that educate the customers that we don't want to have our product out there in, in the environment. So if you see alcohol litter, you can go back to the liquor store and say, hey, clean this up. If you don't have a local operator, a resident working there and running and owning the operation, then you don't have that control. And that's just one example. Litter is ugly, and we don't want it, but that's just one example of how you having, being proactive and having an operation that is responsible and ethical, preferably local and diverse, then you really benefit by not burying your head under the sand and being in denial that, right now, the black market is serving all of New Jersey. There's no question that there's all kinds of stuff around, and who knows who's selling what, no one's checking ID, and they're selling whatever else they sell, something that may be more dangerous to people, young people, that we want to keep away and discourage them from having contact with a person that might have cocaine or PCP or something, when all they might want is a little cannabis for spiritual use or just some medical use that isn't necessarily diagnosed. It helps me sleep better, I'm not technically a patient, I'm just, I guess, a civil disobedient until the governor signed the law. But the people voted for cannabis, and if you don't want to provide that in your town, that's, that's not really a big concern for me, other than the medical people that really need it. But I think that it would be consistent with the will of the people and just individual liberty and freedom in a conservative government to advocate for homegrowing rights. Tell, from Gottheimer to Trenton, please tell your peers homegrowing rights altogether fitting improper. So I think, you know, Martha Stewart would be a fit for your town, the Berkshires in Massachusetts, that's a lot like your area, I think, you know, and it, it works there, so keep an open mind, you know, check it out, and I, I wish you the best with this, I wish you good luck, and, and I appreciate very much your, your time, and, and to the children of Northern Highlands Regional, I want to tell them that I am against Asian hate and Black Lives Do Matter, and I appreciate them having that conversation frankly and openly, and bless you all, thank you, good evening.
Great, thank you for your comment. Thank you. Mr. Savistano, did you have something that you want to say, a public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My mouse is not working well this evening, so having trouble unmuting myself here. I just wanted to mention about the, the Green Team, we did submit for two grants. I'm confident that we'll receive the smaller $2,000 grant, and we also submitted the second grant for $20,000. And I want to thank Jim and Ed for their assistance, and also Michelle, I know that's important, that dealing with Joe DeFranco, who helped to write the grant. So we made a lot of progress in that regard. Ridgewood is hosting a, an EPS Styrofoam recycling event this Saturday. If anybody happens to have Styrofoam that they would like to bring to Ridgewood, you can bring it after 10:00 PM, it's open to the public until noon. And also, I want to thank Liz, she had sent information to me about a compost program that has begun in Ridgewood, and I was able to invite a council member and their recycling coordinator to be a speaker at our Green Team meeting, and that was very helpful. Very interesting presentation, and I'm on board with that, it's a good program and it'll significantly affect the amount of trash that ends up, and hopefully will lower to the fees in the future. And also, your questions about textiles were, were very interesting, thank you for that. I have a quick question about the water, if you don't mind, Liz. I know you mentioned that the, the RFP went out. Is there a timeframe on when you expect that that would be implemented? Because I have an idea that might be helpful in the future, along with what Jackie McSwigan had done, to have everybody allowing inspection of their sump pumps? Would that be something that would disappear, would we have no responsibility for that type of program any longer?
So, the inspections of the sump pumps had to do with the sewer and our sewer charges, and it is, you know, there's an ordinance against having your sump pumps empty into what would then be collected into the sewer system. And so that, the sewer system is, is, you know, we use Northwest, Northwest Bergen Sewer Authority, and that is something that, you know, again, sewer next to the police, the sewer costs are our largest budget line item. So we are always trying to encourage individuals to make sure that they are in compliance with that ordinance. So that will, you know, that, that remains important, just that we continue to try to decrease unnecessary water going into the sewer system, which just costs money.
Okay, well, but my question is something that, a similar program perhaps to address timings on sprinkler systems, for example, would that be in our purview if the, the system were sold, to do something like that, or maybe you don't think that's necessary?
I mean, I, I think at this point, quite honestly, we, we can always talk about things right now. We do, you know, when, we, we, when necessary, we restrict the timing, always we're trying to get people to not use their sprinklers daily, it's not necessary for plantings unless, you know, they need an exception for new plants. But, you know, we're not, the RFP has gone out, the timeline is that we should have the, any responses, any bid responses back on May, Friday, May 21st, and we'll move forward. And if there were to be a bid that the Water Committee and the Mayor and Council then felt should be moved forward into public review, that would then happen going forward, and based upon the way the legal statutes that we're working under, we would bring it, anything that seems valuable would be brought to referendum at the November election. But certainly, I, I always welcome, Mark, you know, contact me, I love to talk about water, so, you know, any ideas you have, certainly email me, and we can, you know, either you can email me the information, or we can talk, set up a time to talk.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard at this time?
My name is Edward Lefty Grimes. Again, I'm with sativaacross.org, 501(c)(3) in New Jersey. I appreciate that you guys prayed before the meeting, I like that a lot, I'm Christian and that's, I'm disabled and I don't work anymore, and I have dedicated my life to helping the sick and the dying people. Let me just read something for you, because I, I know some towns, they don't pray, or they stop praying, and I don't know why, but Genesis 1:29, "Then God said, 'Here I have given to you every dangerous pill that pharmaceutical,'" Oh, no, no, he didn't say it. "God said, 'Here I have given you every seed-bearing plant that is on the entire earth, and every tree with seed-bearing fruit, let them serve as fruit for you. Every wild animal of the earth, and to every flying creature of the heavens, and to everything moving on the earth in which there is life, I have given all green vegetation for food, and it was so.'" And if you look in Ezekiel 47:12, it talks about leaves of healing. So there is precedence in the Bible, because that's what we used for thousands of years. And I was on Oxycontin, I was on these man-made chemicals for years, because I have an artificial disc, I have a fusion, I have a two-level cervical here, had a couple of years ago, and for 10 years, I was a zombie, I was drooling on myself from Oxycontin, Roxycodone, gabapentin, Valium, they had me on all these drugs, and they were, they were almost free, they actually were free, I was on workers' comp, so these were free drugs, I was getting all these drugs for free. And I was a zombie, I didn't like the way I felt, and they had me on 90mg of Roxy every three hours. You heard me right, 90mg of Roxy every three hours was my prescription, that's enough to kill somebody. And it took me a long time to get off those pills, it took me 10 months using cannabis, it took me 10 months. I tried for three days, the first time I failed, I wound up in the fetal position on the floor, second time, same thing, took me four tries. I had to titrate from 90mg to 45 to 30, I had to keep titrating down, and I got to a level where I could go cold turkey and I got off of it, but now, I didn't make it easy on myself. At the time, I just smoked a bunch of cannabis and I got myself off those pills, but what I should have done is used oils and tinctures and edibles and even suppositories, and that's what I use now to help deal with my pain. When I had this two-level cervical fusion done two years ago, I was afraid they were going to put me back on opiates. I didn't want to be back on opiates, and I was afraid that, yeah, I'm going to have to go start through all that stuff again and go through withdrawals again, and I didn't go through that. I used cannabis suppositories, cannabis tinctures, cannabis edibles, oils, I didn't take any pills for this two-level cervical fusion, zero. I was surprised. I actually surprised myself at the, how, how powerful and great God really is and how his medicine has, has saved my life and many other people. And I would urge you to look at this, we're going to call it a wheelchair tax, a cancer tax, a tax on multiple sclerosis, that's what it is, let's face it, it's a wheelchair tax. But I would urge you to take that tax and give us representation for that taxation and give us wheelchair access, and the few places that you don't have access, there's a few, I got to tell you, your sidewalks are amazing. I, you spent a lot of time and effort on those sidewalks, and they're great, but I think that there's a couple places that could be, have access, and with that wheelchair tax money, maybe that you can partner with these businesses to go and halves with them, and they're not big problems, it's one, one step, and a one step is a wall to someone in a wheelchair. And I'll leave it at that, I'm looking forward to speaking more with you about this, and just to keep the right, the, the minds of, keep your minds on the patients, that's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
I thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard at this time?
Yes, I would like to.
Can you hear me? Oh, you can go first, that's okay, that's okay, you can go first.
The floor is yours.
Oh, me? Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
We can, Jackie, do you have a comment?
I, I just want to, I joined the meeting late and I apologize because I was leaving, we had a library board meeting tonight, but just on behalf of the library board, our, our strategic plan committee met with the finance committee of the council, and we are going to be going ahead with applying for the state library grant, and we just want to thank the council for your support and your guidance and your open hearts towards, you know, supporting us in this endeavor. We're not, you know, we're not sure we're, we have a crack at this, but we felt like we have a responsibility to the residents of Allendale to at least try to get some money to renovate the library, so we're going to proceed with it, we're going to be filing our application by June 4th with the help of the borough's grant writer and the architect. But again, we just, I just want to really let you know how grateful we are for your support and, and your guidance on this, because we'll probably be circling back with you through the process to make sure we're on, you know, on track, and we're all looking in the same direction on this.
Great, Jackie, thank you, and thank, thank the library board for all of their work.
Awesome. Jackie, you need to set your address, sweetie.
Oh, sorry, 70, 70 Greenway.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Is that?
Hello? Hi, this is Natalie again, from 16 Heights Road. Just real quick, I forgot to mention earlier, you had discussed the conditions of your fields and, and all of that, and I've noticed for the past few years, the grandstand itself has had some sort of graffiti on the top. And I've noticed for the past few years, the grandstand itself has had some sort of graffiti on the top bench. I don't know if anybody's been there lately. I haven't been there lately, but the last time I was there, it was still there. And it's been there-
Where, Natalie? Is it on the home side or the visitor side?
It's, um, it's, it's in the grandstand. It's, uh-
Oh, all right.
Where, where, Ron, Mr. said that it's, it's, it's being addressed.
Should be next week. It's going to be addressed next week.
Thank you. And, and it's also like the, the grandstand, I know that it's, it's probably hard to take care of it, but it, it typically is, it's like filthy. I know it must be hard to, to keep up with that and maintain it. But as a parent sitting in the stands with, you know, guests who come in and sometimes sit there, it, you know, it's, it's, I think it could be, you know, a better condition. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone that we haven't heard of? JV, I'm not sure who that is, but you have a comment?
Uh, yes. Good evening. My name is Jamie Van Skiver. I'm from Paulsboro, New Jersey. Um, I'm also with Sativa Cross.org, nonprofit for cannabis patients and disability accessibility.
Please tell us your address, please.
427 Greenwich Avenue in Paulsboro.
Great. Okay. Go ahead with your comment.
Um, thank you for making the distinction between medical and medical needs and recreational happenings. Um, I personally am a patient as well.
I, I just want to be clear. You're welcome to make your comment. As we discussed in the work session, we don't have anything on the agenda tonight on this. It, this, the, it has been discussed in our Land use committee. It's going to be, it's been discussed in our Public Safety Committee. Any action that we take will be, there will be notice of it. It'll be on the, the, the agenda. So you may, I, I understand we have three comments from people out of, not from Allen Dale who wish to make their, their opinions known. That's fine, but you might want to follow our agenda and when it's on, on the agenda, then come and give your comments then.
I waited patiently and didn't disrupt during your agenda comment portions. And this is open public comment and I'm permitted to make my comment during this time.
You're, you're free to speak. I was just trying to clarify in case you missed during the work session. I spoke to it that it's not on the agenda tonight. So I was just trying to clarify in case you had missed that. You're free to speak.
We're done with the agenda items, right? We're now in open public comment?
That's correct.
So why would I be confused?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll start off by extending my condolences to your EMS. I myself have spent a few decades in my community, Squad 17-9, as an EMTD, search and rescue, environmental triage specialist and firefighter one. I understand it's a very hard hit to the community. Um, I volunteered a lot until I got sick. I was diagnosed with immune illness, systemic lupus. Um, my immune system attacks my body, my soft tissue, my vital organs, tendons, ligaments, muscles, skin, basically everything that's not bone. I was having to go take infusions, take immune suppressants to try to shut down my immune system from attacking me. Anti-malarials because my kidneys were unfortunately a favorite target and that was supposed to protect them. Um, nerve blockers, antidepressants, anti-anxieties. I was on at least a dozen things. Uh, now I don't take anything. I'm pharmaceutical free. I'm completely managing my illness with cannabis. I'm not just masking my symptoms and tricking my brain and chemicals into not thinking I'm not sick or not in pain. My body's actually healing itself and I can prove that. Lab work does not lie. My inflammation levels are down. My kidney is repairing, basically. Um, and my anti-nuclear antibodies, anti-DNA, that's what's produced when your immune system attacks itself. And that's the only thing it's produced out of. That's below in, in normal range and I have that completely managed with a plant, with a system in my body called the endocannabinoid system that God put there and a plant called the cannabis plant that's on this earth that God also put there. Um, I don't know if people really comprehend when we talk about chronic illness and chronic pain. These ailments are not going away ever. And when chronic pain, you start down a road of pharmaceuticals, your body's going to develop tolerances and in turn your body's going to need and want more and ravage your body sooner. I don't want to go down that path for my medical choices. Uh, people are killing themselves, veterans. I don't know if any of you are bothered by that. 25 per day. I don't know if you're familiar with antidepressants and SSRIs, but they can increase thoughts of suicide desire. And this is what we're giving them. Instead of cannabis, instead of a plant, it's so dangerous, unlike whatever they just dealt with and got their PTSD from. But, um, if you think it doesn't belong in your community, I hope you wonder if you all sat here and voted about, did pharmacies belong in your community? Because that's where the fentanyl, that's where the Oxycontin, that's where Xanax and Klonopin and the things that are abused and the people that, the things that people are overdosing on come from. Cannabis has never killed a single, single person in history. If someone has exposure to cannabis and goes to the hospital, they will be there for observation. They're not filtering their blood. They're not pumping their stomach. They're literally sitting there observing them. You're not administering Narcan. As an EMT, and I still do a lot of outreach in cities near me, Camden, Trenton, Atlantic City, I have to keep Narcan on me because I'm going to watch somebody go down during outreach, during volunteer, during feeding, during clothes distribution. And I'm not administering any Narcan for people on cannabis. I'll tell you that right now. It's fentanyl and that's what's in your pharmacy. And I hope if you do consider a medical dispensary, that you don't impose harder implements than you would a pharmacy and other people's medical means. And I would also ask you to consider if you're going to be taxing that, do you need that money that bad, like blood money? Are you taxing other people's medication? You would have a business in town. It would bring revenue and people eating. People aren't using cannabis. I'm a medical cannabis patient. Unfortunately I have to travel. I don't drive. I considered myself lucky. I have one within half an hour. But that's unfortunately the one that usually has moldy medicine. And with my lungs being compromised already with my immune illness, I really can't risk it. So now that means I need like a hundred and $30 one-way Uber ride to the next dispensary. Maybe if delivery were implemented like Jake's Law and I don't, I'm not holding my breath for that. But I like to go out and tend to my own needs, my own shopping. I like to browse and see what's available, not just a few menu items. Maybe if the tech guy updated the thing that day, don't make people house arrest, homebound. Like they deserve to go out in their community and attended their own needs and that's not going to happen if you ban their medication. And we are at a point that 67% of the state voted for recreational. And I'm still sitting here making sure that you understand medical. Listen to your constituents, please. Do you think they voted for it because they didn't want it around?
So I, I'm going to, if I get your name and address, I'm going to have to stop you because we, you have five minutes, but it was, I appreciate what you said. I want to get, make sure that your comments get put in the record and attributed to you. Could you just spell your, your name so we can make sure it's in the record?
Jamie, J.A.I.M.E.
Yes.
Van Skiver, V.A.N., space, capital S, C.I.V.E.R. And it's 427 Greenwich Avenue, Paulsboro, New Jersey, 08066.
Okay. Thank you. The battery's out.
That was the end of my time or?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. And that was a little over, but I didn't want to cut you off. Yeah, that's okay. It's plugged in. So, uh, the laptop has, uh, run out of power. Is there anyone else from the public, uh, who wishes to be heard?
Yes, I would like to be heard, please.
And, and I can't see you. So just say your name and address for the record.
Marina, M.A.R.I.N.A., like where you dock a boat. Last name Redman. Three Borough Square, Parling, New Jersey.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss my journey with medical cannabis and how much it's helped me with anxiety and with unfortunately cancer. When I was little, I was born with this, with a severe birth defect on my left leg. They tried to do a bunch of surgeries. It didn't work. I had to spend nights in the hospital. Back then your parents weren't allowed to stay in. They told you'd be a big girl, not to cry. I was one, two, three and four years old. Imagine having somebody tell you or your child to be a big girl. When I would go through surgery, you know how these days your parents are glad to cuddle you and kiss you and bring you in the operating room? Hell, they were just burning. They had these masks on their hair up and it was scary. And I was told once again, you'll be fine. Nothing is wrong. Yeah, right. And I got so scared and it was, it was unbelievable, which helped, which I got anxiety from. My, my blood pressure can go so far up where it could go up to 199. And that's, that's really high. Um, and then unfortunately in 2017, I was diagnosed with stage four cancer. I lost 50 pounds in three weeks. That's an insane amount of, uh, a weight to lose. It took me over a month for me to get my medical cannabis card. And I had to drive 30 minutes one way, 30 minutes another way. Actually I had to have somebody drive me because I couldn't drive because of the chemo. The chemo is just unbelievable. You have no, I don't know if anyone's here has ever been on chemo and I pray to God you never do. I hope to God that one day there's a, uh, cure for this. But it is so bad where you can't move. You have chemo brain. You can't think. You can't move. I've had doctors tell me, please, please, smoke before you see me because of my anxiety. The medical, I, I can't go, I can't say enough words how, how much the medical cannabis has helped me. Like I said, I lost, you know, 50 pounds in three weeks. And for those who can't drive, you can take Uber or Access Link. But sometimes they don't want to drive you there. And if you have a service dog, all of a sudden they become allergic. And Access Link, that's even worse. They call that access thing. Same thing. They can just drop you off and pick you up whenever. And then, and then to, to top it all off, when you go to the dispensaries, you're not even allowed to use their bathrooms. So if you have an issue, you can't use their bathrooms. Like I said, and already in your county, you have 150 places which prescribe medical cannabis, um, internal medicine, family practice, oncologies. You actually have nine psychiatrists in your county alone that prescribe it, one in your town. You have two pediatric doctors, pediatric doctors that prescribe medical cannabis. One of them is in your town. Do you see how much these doctors believe and love? And we only have 10 dispensaries. Imagine only having 10, um, 10 of your, um, Walgreens or 10 CVSs. Could you imagine how, how bad that would be for you guys? And to the people who say, oh, we could have the next town over. No, we can't. Because when, when you're that sick, you can't move and it's not fair to us. In a way it's bullying. It's bullying people with cancer, people with all these horrible diseases. You have people with PTSD who count on this drug like me. I have it because of what happened to when I was younger. And if you, if you want to ask me any questions, feel free. This is just such a great thing. It's so bad where my anxiety was so bad. My mother would say, please go upstairs and smoke. Doctors would beg me to smoke because my anxiety was so bad. What doctor would tell you, please smoke medical cannabis before you see me? Does anyone have had a doctor tell you that? Like I said, there's already 150 places in your county alone that, that, that prescribe this. Thank you.
Great. Listen, great comment. Um, I can't see anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. Um, I will request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, everyone. The public, thank you for your comments. Everyone have a good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.